Good evening, welcome to the February 4, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting of the Exeter Township School Board, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Feig, could you take roll call, please?
Jason Melman.
Here.
Julie Shaver.
Here.
Deborah Blum.
Here.
Dr. Andrew Ballard.
Present.
Dr. Fedler.
Here.
Dr. Diane Harris.
Present.
Senator Morgan.
Here.
Brown Doven.
Allison Wilson.
Here.
The President will have to.
Thank you, Mr. Feig, in addition to the eight board members in attendance this evening, we're also joined at the board table by our Solicitor Sharon Montane and members of the school district administration, including Dr. Kristi Haller Superintendent, Mrs. Dawn Harris Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Josh Hoyt Director of Teaching and Learning, Mrs. Diane Skornavaki Director of Human Resources, and Mr. Brian Feig who serves as our Business Administrator and Board Secretary. The meeting minutes are attached, does anyone have any changes or discussion they would like to make regarding meeting minutes for the January 7, 2025 Special Voting Meeting and the Committee of the Whole Meeting, or the January 21, 2025 Board Voting Meeting? All right, hearing done, we're going to move on to Deva Par Consulting, they'll be presenting their analysis and recommendations for the schedule at the high school.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for having us back here again, we're pleased to be here, I'm joined tonight by Sue, Dr. Sue Sneeth and Dr. Cindy Merzessky, we're going to go through our findings, the process, and how we ended up arriving here this evening, and then also we'll recap and talk about possible next steps through the process, so again, thank you for having us this evening, we're happy to be here. Let me see if that'll change, oops, okay, so, the why, restructuring a master's schedule is a vast endeavor that requires input from multiple stakeholders in the school community. The Exeter Township School District has decided to utilize a structured process to collect information from stakeholders to develop a master's schedule that fulfills the district's vision of inspiring and preparing today's learners for tomorrow's opportunities. The overall guiding question as we embarked on this work was, is the current Exeter Township High School's schedule the most efficient to ensure that the best outcomes for students are reached? And before I turn it over to Dr. Merzessky, just a few comments, throughout this process, I want to commend the administration, the building level administration, it's been a very collaborative, a very open process, we've requested a lot of information, we reviewed a lot of documents, which we're going to discuss this evening, and we couldn't be more pleased with just, again, that collaboration, that cooperation, and really the support, because when you're doing a project like this, it has to be some level of partnership when you're coming in as a consulting group, and this administration, you know, Dr. Haller, Ms. Harris, the whole way down, was phenomenal, so again, I really appreciate that on behalf of our team at Deva Par. Again, the team here tonight, Dr. Sneeth is our Vice President, she's Senior Consultant and owner of Deva Par, we have Dr. Cindy Merzessky, who was our Project Lead and Senior Consultant, and then myself, Chris Selmer, I'm President, Senior Consultant and Owner of Deva Par. I'm now going to turn it over to Dr. Merzessky.
Thanks, Chris, thank you. Uh, yeah, please, want to take this?
Yep.
That's okay.
There we go. You just have to.
Yep, got it.
There you go.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
He's doing that because he knows, I cannot see those slides up there, I can a little bit, I'm going to do, okay, so, thank you, everybody, for having us tonight, I just want to mention that in addition to the three of us, we also had some other folks, some other consultants that were onsite and virtually to help out with some of the focus groups, so there was a team that was working on this. This is the process that we used in trying to include as many of the stakeholder groups as possible, and I'm going to go through each of these in detail, as how we involved them and what the feedback was coming from each of the groups. We did onsite visits, we did focus groups, which we'll look at in a second, students and parents, educators, support staff, and the community, we also did interviews, individual interviews with building and the district administrators, as, we also reached out and had, I should say, communications, it was really through email communications, but did get information from the Technology Center, from BCTC. Okay, next slide, please, oh, I got to do that, next slide, please, thank you. Okay, so, under some of the details, to give you some more in-depth information on each of these, we did two site visits on September 17 and September 20, and I listed the participants that we had there, you can see that, one-to-one interviews, there were nine of those, nine individual interviews and administrators that we spoke with, the timeframe was there, and you can see all of the administrators that we talked to, then, kind of, the next kind of time-consuming but also really important pieces were the focus groups, so we had student focus groups, there were three groups, with the help of Mr. Campbell and his staff at the high school, who organized those three groups for us, we had a grade nine, a grade 10 and 11, and a grade 12 group, just let me check, where'd Tom go, is that right, that's who it was, yes, and there was approximately 47 students there total during the focus groups, they ran an hour to an hour and a half each in those focus groups. The next group that we looked at was the parents, and actually, the parents, we did a survey for the parents, and we put this survey out, it ran from, with the help of Jen Breton, it ran from October 15 to October 25, there is a link there, I'm not going to go to it right now, but there is the link that Jen sent out through Parents Square to the parents at the high school, we did get 67 participants, it might not seem like a lot to you, but I actually thought it was a good number, I was happy we got more than 20, but 67, and it seemed like it was across the board, the responses were really varied, consistent in some topics, but varied, it seemed, as far as what the students were doing and participating in, so, we were happy with that. The educator focus groups, we did three separate groups, again, Mr. Campbell and his staff organized those for us, we did those after school on the three dates that you see up there, there were approximately 32 teachers, teachers, counselors, a mix of educators there, one of those days, we did have a support staff group, that again, was mostly the paraprofessionals, there were five or six of them there, and we had questions and discussed topics with them also, and then the community focus group was done on November 21, that was done virtually, and there were approximately nine participants on that, and though, that was several people, several folks from our community, from the community, outside of the school realm, our, for example, our police liaison was one of those, Education Foundation was represented there, some of the school board members were there, so that was the community focus group. We then, and I'm going to take a little time on this slide, because I want to go through these and sort of point out some of the details of what we found factually in each of these documents, these are some of the documents that we reviewed and went through, that were provided by the high school and district staff, and was really helpful in looking toward our recommendations. The first thing we looked at was course enrollment reports, now, this was for the current school year, 24-25, and in approximately, there's over 400 classes that are offered at the high school, 14 have less than, less than or equal to 10 students in them, that is really not a bad number at all, I've worked and seen many high schools that the numbers are, that have much smaller classes, this is due to a number of things, putting in an extra section when there's course conflicts, there's AP courses in these numbers, so those are some courses that not a lot of students maybe have interest in taking, but are offered because there are students that are interested in looking at careers, so, I have there, that's less than 3% of the total number of courses, so it's really not a bad number, there were an additional 30 classes that had somewhere between 11 to 15 students in them, again, those numbers are not bad at all when you're looking at scheduling. We looked then at the current high school schedule, and I think you're all familiar, you've heard the discussion of that, it's basically, technically, an eight-period day, if you would look at it, but it has a blend of single periods that run 44 minutes, and then, some block periods, the blocks because of the additional passing time, they are 92 minutes, and that depends upon courses, which courses the students are in, which courses the teachers are teaching, and then they also have three 30-minute lunch periods, and I want to just emphasize, the students only get one of those lunch periods, I was at another place, we were presenting, and I had a question about why students were getting three lunches, they're not, they're getting, they're getting one lunch period, and they get, and then there's the four minutes also for the E4 news. Then we looked at teacher's schedules, and of course, from what I just said about the high school schedule, the teacher's schedules are a mix of the block and the single, some teachers have all blocks, some teachers have all singles, as well as the students, the same thing, and some have a mix of the blocks and the singles. During the non-class time, when the teachers are not in class teaching, most of the teachers have what's the equivalent of nine prep periods and three duty periods in a six-day student cycle, and I'm just want to kind of clarify there, if you have students at the high school, you know that they run on a two-day cycle, so, we're, the contract, though, refers to a student's six-day cycle, so we're looking at three sets of those two-day cycles. Co-teaching assignments, there are some courses that are co-taught, and it is dependent upon, really, on the master's schedule and teacher availability, where we're looking at where the co-teaching pieces are, there is not, for the most part, I would say, there is not collaborative co-teaching planning, correct, Mr. Campbell? So, we were looking at that also. Then looking at the failure rates by course, for the 23-24 school year, so last school year, there were 263 courses that students failed, so, that's a little deceptive, and that's why I have the asterisk there, because it could be, it's not 263 students, it could be a student failing more than one course, which show up two times in that number. The highest number in looking for the 23-24 school year, the highest number of failures was in the ninth-grade Earth Space Science with 28, followed by Algebra I and English II, which had 18 failures each. The reason that that's important to look at is, we wanted to take a look at what was happening with the singles and the blocks, and we're not really sure that the Earth Space, the Earth Space, the ninth-grade Earth Space is the only course in ninth grade that the students take as a block, the rest are singles, so, does that have an impact, it's a question you'll see us come up with a little bit later, and that also doesn't include, I didn't include in their BCTC courses or the virtual cyber course failures, this was just for those that would be impacted by the high school's schedule. We did look at sample student's schedules, to get an idea of how the students were doing, and again, seeing that they're, again, the mix of the block and the single piece, though we looked at school board policies, all school policies are current and up-to-date and supportive of the graduation credits and the work that's being done at the high school. The strategic plan, you've probably seen this before, the 24-27 goals for the strategic plan is increasing proficiency in grade three ELA, math proficiency in grade seven, and increased graduation rate, all of those actually impact the high school, but, because all those students feed into the high school, but, then we have the increased graduation rate is the one that's specifically at the high school. The teacher absentee substitute fill rates, those had a consistent high percentage of fill rates for the daily subs, and why do we need to know that, and why do we look at that? Well, as you've probably heard, it's not easy finding subs in public school, and if you don't, aren't able to get the subs in, then you have to go to your in-house teachers and your in-house staff and have them cover classes, so when you're looking at the availability of teachers as far as additional prep periods, or their regular prep periods, it does have an impact on that, and for us, as we're examining the schedule, we need to know how much sort of wiggle room do we need to allow for the substitute teachers? At the high school, it, don't, we don't need a lot of that wiggle room, we can see that they do have a high rate, and I just want to say, this comes up later, too, that that's very difficult to have that high fill rate, and it really comes down to, one, being able to attract substitute teachers that are out there, so there's kudos for that, and two, having somebody in a position that can really dedicate some time to that and do some good work in making sure that those slots get filled, so, the person that's doing that, and I forget her name right now, Kristi, Debbie, is doing a really great job, I just want to give her a shout-out, and the high school program of studies, so, here's another clarification I'd like to make sure that we have as we're going through this, the program of studies, very comprehensive, a lot of great courses offered, and their, students must complete 24 credits in order to graduate, seven of those credits must be in electives, and this term elective is also misinterpreted by folks as being electives, oh, the students don't have to take those courses, and that's not what the term means, it really means that they're not in those core courses of English, Language Arts, Science, Math, and Social Studies. So, when I use the term elective, it doesn't mean courses that don't need to be taken, because the students do need to have, at least seven of their credits of the 24 have to be in the electives that we talk about, and that can be elective social studies, it could be elective tech ed, could be elective other languages, but, the electives are mandatory for graduation, it's just not mandatory what they take. The collective bargaining agreements and looking at the Education Association, CBA, it requires 240 minutes of prep time during a six-day, student's six-day cycle, so that is equivalent, at the high school, 240 minutes is a little bit more than six prep periods, if a teacher has six prep periods in a six-day cycle, that would be equivalent of 264, so six prep, six prep periods would meet the requirement of 240 minutes that's in the CBA. And then students' performance data, we'll talk about that a little bit more, Sue's going to go over some of that in a little bit. Am I pointing at the right way? Oh, there we go. The other thing we did is, we went out and looked at some of the research-based features, and what research says are best practices to have efficient high school schedules, and I'll just read them, but in case you can't see them, but, the time for intervention and support, PLCs, PLCs are professional learning communities, and that's collaborative time to have embedded professional development, I just mentioned something about co-teaching, coming planning time, that would be consistent in there, too, involving teachers in the process of scheduling, such as is done at the high school, where department heads and the teachers work together to put together, to work with Mr. Campbell and his staff to put together reasonable schedules. Accessibility for all students, accessibility from where, what courses they are taking, and their access to be able to take courses at higher levels, if appropriate, getting students to BCTC, if appropriate, all of those pieces would be put under there. Implement a regular flex period is a best practice, that is, by the regular flex period, what they mean is, some schools have something like a half-hour period in the middle of the day, like between periods three and four, that's used for intervention, enrichment, clubs, activities, and it's helpful as long as it is implemented with the structure. I have seen schools that this flex period has kind of gotten out of hand a little bit, and that there's some issues develop around a flex period, but if there's structure put in place, it can be very useful. Using data to create strategic student groups, and basing your interventions and your structured, your supported study halls and such, on the data, special activity days, and plans for virtual learning, so those were some of the things that we kept in mind for best practices as we were looking at the high school schedule. Some types of schedules, if you're not familiar with, and some of you may be familiar with high school schedules, but these are just some types of schedules that are out there. Standard periods just means exactly that, what a lot of us are accustomed to, like seven or eight-period day, you do the same thing every day, every period, you go through, you have the same schedule every day, might mix up with a phys ed or a music class here or there. Rotating standard periods is the same thing, you might have a seven or eight-day period, but, so, for example, maybe you have eight classes, but the day is only six periods long, so to give more instructional time, they then rotate the periods, so you might do one through six, then the next day you do like seven and eight, and one through four, it can be confusing, but it does work if you're, depending upon what you're looking for. Four-by-four block is what you would have if, it's sort of a little bit what the modified block is at Exeter, you have four block classes in the fall, and you have four block classes in the spring semester. AB block is, you have four blocks on day one, and you have different four blocks on day two, or day A and day B, and then you keep going, AB, AB, AB. A rotating block is exactly what I just explained, you might have four blocks, but you only do three a day, and then it rotates, so you do one, two, three, and then the next day you do four, one, two, it's, it can get pretty complicated. Intercessions, they actually run the schedule that they have, let's say, 10 weeks or 12 weeks of classes, and then they have a break, and then they have another 12 weeks of classes, that can only really work if you have your whole district on something like that. Modified standard periods, this is, like, for example, you would have an eight periods, eight single periods, but then, two days out of the week, you block them, so, on a, in this example here, on Wednesday, you would run periods one, three, five, and seven in a block, and on Thursday, you would run two, four, six, and eight in a block, and that way, those lab classes get to have labs one day a week, or your tech classes, or your FCS, or whatever art classes can have that, still have that block one time a week. And then the strip-and-block is what I just described as what's happening at the high school now, so, that's what we have there. Okay, so, let's get into some of the focus groups, we did, we're going to talk about the student, the parent, the educator, and the community perspective, and I'm going to emphasize that word perspective, because remember, everything in these focus groups is perception data, it doesn't mean it's necessarily true, I used to have a superintendent that said that perception is reality, and I used to say, well, perception is somebody's reality, it might not be the true reality, so I just want to say that as we're going into this, and I didn't mean to make that wrong. So, the student perspective, I would say that, you know, even though it just says the students like the strip-and-block, I would say that most of the students, we did not hear a whole lot of pushback, even though it looks like there's more issues than likes, that's not really how it came across, in the focus groups, it really came across mostly that the students really liked the current strip-and-block, they liked having it mixed up, they liked having some courses for the single period, and some for the double period, we just emphasize here some of the other little things that came out of it. The study halls, they could have a double study hall one semester and no study halls, there's a little inequity there, Mr. Campbell and I have talked about that also. The BCTC students said that they feel a little disconnected from high school life, I'll tell you, this is absolutely true for every single high school, because of the way they're half-day at BCTC and half-day at homeschool, all schools really try to work to make that not be true, and to find as many things that they can do, but it's hard because of the schedule, too, between the BCTC. BCTC is fabulous, it's such a wonderful program to have in this county, and it's so great that students get to participate in all of those programs. Students said also that they did not always get into the electives that they wanted, particularly music, food classes, and business classes, the food classes are always full, right, Mr. Campbell, always full, that's not because, so, if there were more offered, more would be able to get in, it's not, that's not because of the scheduling so much as that they are always full. The BCTC students did have a couple of things that they talked about, not always, A, but it's not always convenient to use their lockers, they felt, they perceived that they wait around for the buses at times, Mr. Campbell and I talked about that a little bit, not quite sure where that's coming from, but that's another thing to look into, and, as always, the district and the BCTC schedule do not always have the same days off, that's been going on forever, there's 16 districts that need to coordinate schedules with BCTC, so it's really hard to get, I think we got one day that's common, and that's about it, and even that, not so much anymore, so, that is just what the students said. They don't, have no preference whether there's a homeroom period or not, they didn't seem to have a call, like, we absolutely want to have a homeroom period, so, that wasn't really an issue. One of the things that came up a couple of times, they talked about computer work and packet work in classes and having less of that, and it came up a couple of times about having more media and production courses offered, again, that would be coming down to how many students are in the class and the offering of the electives. Next is the parent perspective, most parents did feel that their children could get the help that they needed, some said that there were cases that it was a little bit difficult, but they felt it was teacher-dependent, as we said, most said yes, I think we asked the yes/no question, 48 said yes, that they can get help, and 10 is no, I guess there must have been an extra one, I don't know, I got another one in there, but. The courses, they had split feelings about whether they were able to get, the students were able to get into the courses that they wanted or not, most said yes, but there were some exceptions, and some were talking, again, the same ones that their, that their children were talking about, the electives and the advanced classes, they did say that there was an online option, which is offered, I think, and one of the examples, I think one of the parents said there was, child was taking German one, or one of the level world languages classes online, and then there was, again, some discussion about the PM, BCTC students having conflicts with some of the afternoon activities. From the educator perspective, again, I don't know if it stands out here, but, the educators, for the most part, I did not really hear any that did not like the strip-and-block model that we have with the blended, again, they gave really, and I only have it really there as one bullet, but they gave a number of times, giving examples of why the strip classes, the single-period classes work well in some instances, and the block works well in the other, really, the flexibility around the content, the diverse needs of the students, sometimes, for example, the lower-level math classes, and by that, I mean, like, the introductory math classes are run in the single, those math teachers really like that, because they really feel it's important at that point to see students every day, rather than every other day, that would maybe happen in a block, or in the spring, and not in the fall, or in the fall and not in the spring, and not all year long, that would happen in the block. The higher-level math courses then, of course, were in the block. Block works really, really well, obviously, for science classes, because they have the ability to do the science labs, tech ed, art, FCS, the family and consumer sciences, all of those work really well with the block, because they have more time to be able to do the activities. Even the ELA teachers did a great job in explaining why they felt the block worked well for the ELA, they talked about the ability in the English and Language Arts to do reading, and then discussing, and then still having time within that period to start drafting ideas for essays or paragraphs. ideas for essays or paragraphs or whatever they're writing. So to be able to have that nice even block of time, to be able to process the reading and the writing and intersecting them, they felt was really very helpful and very beneficial to the students. Mentioning, I mentioned the science, the block. The internship, the block helps with that because the students, by the time they would get anybody, anywhere for a single period, they'd have to turn around and come back. So the longer block allows for times in the internship. As I mentioned before, almost all the ninth grade classes are stripped except for the signs, and this is done intentionally, as I mean, to support the transition from the junior high to the senior high. And I did mention the math classes and also the world language are stripped for the same reason of being able to have exposure every day all year long. The community perspective, some interesting topics kind of bloomed. We didn't really ask questions around traffic specifically, but it did come out organically out of the conversation about some congestion at the start and end of each day at the high school. And location of the high school is one of the reasons that you might see that, because it is kind of right smack in the middle of the community. The junior high is right there too, so you have a lot of student drivers coming through and you have just community drivers there. They also did talk about this perceived schedule conflict with the BCTC and looking at the transportation pieces there when one is off for the day and looking at midday transportations. And then a concern, a comment did come up about a desire to make sure that the number of full-time professional employees are in place and to be doing an analysis of the FTEs. And we will talk a little bit about that when we talk about the schedule later on. And I turn it over to Sue now, who's going to do a little bit of a recap. We know that you did the data last week, but we're going to just recap a little bit.
Good evening, everyone. So yes, we were able to watch Dr. Hoyt's, his presentation on the data. So we're not going to review all of the data, but we did put it in a term. One thing that's really important when we're talking about master scheduling is that you want to make sure the instructional minutes match the need of the students. And so I wanted to point out, these are three years in a row. So it's 22, 23, and 24, and this is the commendation for your Keystone Algebra. What that means is that they're dark blue, their growth index is above a two. What that means is that in this particular course, your advanced kids are becoming more advanced, your proficient kids are becoming advanced, your basic kids are becoming proficient, and your below basic kids are becoming basic. You're moving kids through the continuum, and that's really, really positive news because that also impacts achievement, obviously. In the area, some of the areas of opportunity, however, are in the areas of the Keystone literature. So this is 22, 23, and 24. What you notice here is that the growth indices are a little bit different. That black line in the middle is equivalent to zero. So any dot that's on the left of the line is a negative number. Any dot that's on the right of the line is a positive number. You always want positive numbers. The higher the number, the more confidence that we have that we're moving kids through that continuum. The lower the number is more confidence that we have that we are losing kids through the continuum, meaning that our below basic kids might be becoming more below basic, our basic kids are becoming below basic, proficient are moving to basic, and advanced are moving to proficient. That's the direction that we never want to go. So we see that in 2022, but in the 23, 24 school year, what we see there is that we are maintaining students where they are, meaning that our proficient and advanced kids are remaining proficient and advanced. However, our below basic and basic students are also remaining below basic and basic. So unlike the algebra where we're moving all groups forward, Keystone really kind of tells us a little bit of a different story that requires some special attention when you look at the master schedule. And then I know that this was a big topic of conversation, which was the area of opportunity for Keystone Biology. You see here that we have relatively low numbers. I know it looks more, I think it looks more stark than it really is. The first one from 2022 is a negative 4.85. I do a lot of work with P-VAS throughout the state. I've seen numbers as low as negative 25. So what people need to understand is that the range for red and the range for dark blue are really, really large, really long, really big. So we see that negative point, negative 4.85 in the 22 school year, but we see some improvement to the negative 1.71, and then last year, a negative 2.20. This really made us ask a lot of questions about how biology is delivered. What are some of the curricular, the instructional, the assessment, and then the organization of biology? And we are going to talk a little bit further about that in the recommendations in regards to what we would recommend in terms of how to schedule bio so that we can see more, we can see more value-added growth. That's what we would be shooting for. Some of the commendations that we have from overview is that student achievement in the areas of algebra and literature greatly exceeds the state averages. So we commend the district on the work that they're doing in that regard. The daily substitute fill rates, we are doing a lot of this work across the state. We work with a lot of school districts, and these fill rates were really incredible compared to what we're seeing. So that's really positive because it really keeps the schedule moving properly. It allows time for teachers to collaborate and plan. So it's a really big kudo to the school district. We do have co-teaching available. We have supported study halls as a means for students to get extra assistance as needed. We also have school board policy in regards to scheduling that is current and in line with best practices with the Pennsylvania School Board Association. Many of the features of the current high school schedule are commensurate with the data and the research that we showed you a little bit earlier. Those features are inherent in the schedule, which, you know, when that schedule is developed, somebody was taking that into consideration. So kudos to that. And then we were really happy with the breadth of classes and the depth of classes that were offered in the program of studies for the high school. So I'm going to pass it over to Cindy for our recommendations.
So along with the recommendations, basically, as we were doing both the commendations and the recommendations, we used all of that information that I talked to you about in the beginning. We used the focus groups, we used the interviews, the site visits, the documents, the data, put all of that together, looked at the research and the best practices, and we put all of that together. That's how we were able to determine what would be a commendation and what would be a recommendation for this. One of the things that we were looking at is the development of some written criteria as to which courses would be initially offered as block and some as strip. There is some of, it's not necessarily written, it's kind of like anecdotally that it's done, and then also, that changes a little bit when you go to try to put it into the schedule. You might not always be able to get a block in, and it might have to switch to a strip, but something to be able to start with. There's two different types of instructional strategies truly that are used in a strip and a block. It's different when you're doing, even though you're teaching the same content in 44 minutes and in the 92 minutes look different. So our recommendation is that there are professional development opportunities for looking at instructional strategies and thinking about that with the turnover. We know we're getting more and more teachers in and more and more teachers retiring, and looking at the turnover and making sure that everybody's on the same page and has the same column language around what is best instructional strategies. You heard us mention BCTC students several times. So our recommendation is that we take a look at BCTC schedules as far as in-house, and then as well as how is it coordinating with the BCTC itself, and what can we do to make sure that our students feel as connected as they can in the school and that they're getting ample time, and that it's equitable between the AM and PM students. There's a little bit of difference there that we need to look at. Looking at the failure rates that I mentioned around earth science, Sue mentioned the biology. Those two go hand in hand a little bit. They're completely different science content, but they are, one's ninth grade, one's 10th grade, they're both in the science department. So there is connection there. So along with looking at the bio, looking at the earth-space science, and whenever you have something like the biology data or the failure rates that you see in the earth-space science, and they're not astronomical, but it's the one that's a little bit more than any of the others, what you have to look at is four different areas: curriculum, instruction, assessment, and organization or systems. You can't pinpoint and just say it has to be this or it has to be this. You really have to look at all four areas and you have to say, what needs to be changed here? Is it curriculum? Is it instruction? Is it assessment? Is it the system? Is it the scheduling? And I know from conversations with Dr. Hoyt that I know the science teachers already have started looking at the earth-space science and the biology curriculum to look at what adjustments might have to be made there. So that's one area that we're looking at. We can continue to look at the systems piece and the scheduling piece as well as the instruction and assessment pieces. And if the teachers had some time, that they could be coordinating across the content, that would really be helpful in looking at how the students are performing and what their outcomes are. There was discussion in a couple of the groups, not only around the traffic patterns, but kind of around some of the transportation scheduling as far as with the BCTC and the end of the day. So maybe there might be something to look at there. Looking at the best practices that would go along with the professional development for instruction in the strip and the block for biology, as I mentioned, with earth-space science. The co-teaching, making the scheduling of that a little bit more intentional as to not just what's available, but looking at, co-teaching is on a continuum of services that we offer for our students with IEPs. So looking at where this fits on the continuum, what students are in need of the co-teaching, and how can we schedule for them to have that rather than fitting the students in the schedule. Increased expectations for the teacher collaboration, collaborative planning, if you're, of course, if you're doing co-teaching, but thinking about our sciences too, or any other content that that could be helpful for. Looking at times, how can we fit more intervention in? How can we fit more professional development in? And how can we make use of the more regular co-teaching services within the teacher's schedule? And looking at the teacher's schedules and looking at how many FTEs, which is some of the discussion that was had in some of the focus groups, how many FTEs you have, how can we work a schedule so that we are meeting the needs, have enough teachers, and don't have too many teachers? That comes down to looking at what your enrollment projections are. And I am, so one of our recommendations is also, it seems that this district has some data showing one things and some day showing another with the enrollment projections. So maybe there would be a need for an enrollment projection study for looking at what's happening in the population, especially with some of the building and stuff that's happening in the district. So I want to talk about the overall recommendation. So the overall recommendation, when we look at our big question is, is the high school's schedule as it stands the most efficient for the outcomes of the students? And our answer to that is that we believe that there is no need for changing from the strip and block blended model. They, when we went, I went through all of those other types of models. None of those other models are going to get you more efficiency out of what the students are doing. However, all of those recommendations, all of these recommendations are what we believe can get more out of the current schedule. We don't believe that changing the current schedule is going to get the efficiency, like changing the number of periods, changing to all block, changing to all strip. That's not going to get you more efficiency, nor is it going to improve the outcomes for the students. However, within the current model, with the tweaks and recommendations and digging in to better use of some time that's already there, we believe that it would be more efficient use as well as help to improve the outcomes for students. And let me go to the next slide, which I think might answer some questions that we have about the number of FTEs. You might remember back on the slide when I was talking about the document review, I pointed out that the collective bargaining agreement calls for 240 minutes within a six-day student cycle. That's six prep periods at the high school would make it 264. So six prep periods would accommodate the minimum that's in the CBA. You also might remember on that slide that I mentioned that most of the teachers have the equivalent of nine prep periods in the six-day cycle. They also have three duty periods. So there is some additional time in there that I took a look at by department and by the number of prep periods. And looking at that, my first instinct was, oh, wow, this seems like we should be able to combine some of this and to combine some of these course loads of these students, of these teachers. But it's not, it's not true. It was the first reaction that I had, and I was wrong. I proved myself wrong. So for example, if you look at the ELA department, if we took every sing, and this is true of every department, if you took every single, if we made it all single periods, if we made the whole schedule just single periods and filled every period up, which you wouldn't really logically be able to do, there's always some conflict in there. But if we did fill every period up, we would end up being able to consolidate and have approximately .5, .6 less of a teacher there. Now that's if everything fell out perfectly in that department. Everything fell out absolutely perfectly. We were able to line everything up. There were no conflicts. We didn't have to worry about extra duties. We didn't have to worry about hall duties. We didn't have to worry about calf duties. That you'd have .5. So that same is true. The same is approximately true for ELA, social studies, math, and science. The problem is certifications don't allow you to have half, well, if you had a teacher that was duly certified, ELA and social studies, maybe you could do it. The chances of doing that these days is nearly impossible. And then if you did, and that teacher left in a year, you'd have to go out and find yet another one. So it's not really feasible, and it doesn't really make sense to say, let's do all single periods with a little bit of a, you know, doubling up for a science lab or something like that, because you're just not going to do it. You're going to save maybe point, and when I think about the labs and stuff, it's even less. It's going to be less than .5, and you're just never going to be able to have that combination. So I looked at the numbers. It's about that same number for ELA, social studies, math, and science. The electives, it's even less because there's fewer teachers. So when you look at world language, phys ed, and health, business, art, and tech, there's savings of possibly .2 to .3 of a teacher in those. And you can't have a duly, I shouldn't say you can't. You're not going to find a duly certified, I don't know, business and art teacher, health and art teacher. You'd have to have dual certification. Certifications at the secondary level prevent being able to condense those classes. Unlike when you have those bubble classes coming up through elementary and middle schools, you can kind of move that around a little bit because elementary certified teachers can teach, you know, the whole gamut of subjects. So you can move that around and move teachers around depending upon where the bubble is. You can't move teachers around in sec, you can't move a science teacher. You can't even move a chemistry teacher to be a biology teacher truly unless they do have both certifications. Those are separate certifications. So that's what this slide is sort of about. Can I ask you to do this again? I talked too much. So that's what this screen is about. I wanted to talk a little bit about that efficiency of the employees, of the FTEs at the high school. So the point being is that... The point being is that without hampering programs, you would not be able to, we're kind of at a point there where you're hitting that balance of being able to give the students the courses and the variety of courses and the levels with the APs and so forth that they need or that they want to also. And you kind of hit that balance where you are right And you, you kind of hit that balance where you, where you are right now with the scheduling pieces that come into play. If the only way that you really could is if you would cut programming, and here's the other thing of that, is let's say you said, okay, let's not offer a wild thing. Let's not offer the AP courses. All right, fine. Those kids still have to be somewhere, right? They have to be in some course, somewhere. So they have to be sitting in some courses. And I showed you those course enrollment numbers intentionally, that you don't have a lot of really, really small classes that you can say, oh, we're running too many under enrollment. You're not. You're really, you're really doing a great job with keeping those classes full and getting the students into the courses that they need. So that's kind of what this is talking about. However, that being said, that time where you're talking about equivalent of three prep periods per teacher in a six-day cycle, that time can be used and re-appropriated, we believe, to fit some of those other, to fit some of those recommendations that we talked about. So let me just kind of go back here. To fit some of those recommendations that we talked about, you have time there where you can have professional development opportunities, where you can have common planning, when you can have teachers looking at the student data to inform their instructional practices, when you can have teachers, more of the supported study halls or something along those lines to look at interventions. You, you can have teachers that are available for enrichment for some students that need the enrichment too. So we see a lot of possibilities and a lot of ways that that time can be reallocated and used to meet some of these recommendations that we have here. All right, Chris, back to you.
I can see, so you can take this. Thank you.
Not an age problem.
No, no, nothing about age, Dr. Merzessky. As far as phase one, we just wanted to review the deliverables based on the proposal we provided. Phase one was the structured interviews with key administrative and operational personnel, facilities walkthrough, tour and review, stakeholder focus groups, and then data presentation and written report for cabinet members. Phase two was to reflect, examine alternate schedules, looking at, you know, stakeholders' wants, needs, available resources, also considerations around financial implications of those scenarios, and then that we would develop options to be considered for change to the high school master's schedule. And again, if requested, which we were, we would come here tonight and present the findings to you all for your review and consideration. There is a phase three, which was an as-needed technical support phase. I'm not going to read everything on there, but depending on the recommendations and how the administration and the board feel about some of what you've heard this evening, you know, we would potentially provide technical support and assistance to continue to maybe dig into some areas a little deeper, but also provide some of the development opportunities and support the administration moving forward and looking at some of those recommendations. The one thing I do want to comment on, just quickly on, on some of the presentation, two points. For the stakeholder focus groups, the data and the analysis you've seen this, this evening, basically, we used a, a analysis of at least three or more of similar comments. So if there was any, you know, comments that were just maybe one, you wouldn't have seen that in the overall findings. So what you saw was a, a collaboration of a lot of feedback that led to us sharing some of those comments with you this evening. The other piece is the biology. So the one thing that we want to point out is the biology, over the past couple of years, there was a lot of turnover within the teaching group with biology. Obviously, if there's lack of continuity, it's going to impact student results. And I think, you know, again, we would be remiss if we didn't note that, and that the administration, again, was already working on some things in that area. And we just, I think, as a thought partner, added some other ideas and things that can be looked at to kind of, you know, turn that tide, so to speak, in a different direction for the future years. Before I turn it, open it up for questions, I'd like to turn over to Dr. Holler, just to see if you have any comments or anything you'd like to share before we open it for questions.
Well, I have a lot of thank yous. I'd first like to thank the board for allowing us to bring in DEVOPAR to do such a comprehensive study. As you can see, all the work that they did, all the research that they did, we would never have been able to do anything like this as an administrative team. There just isn't enough hours in the day. And we wanted a fresh set of eyes to really kind of help guide us in, in next steps. I, I'd like to thank DEVOPAR for just working with us and, and asking a lot of questions and really kind of pushing us to think through different ideas. And then I'd really like to thank the high school team for all your work, for what you do every single day, and especially Tom Campbell, because as we went through this process, there was a lot of learning on my part about the high school schedule, because I was never a high school teacher, and all the work that goes in every single day, all year round, to make sure the schedule works well for our students. And I know that over the time that he's been here, including during a pandemic, there were, there were some changes that were made to make this a better schedule for kids. And with him bringing on Matt and Frank, that's only gotten better. And with the support of Joe Alcarro and Alicia Leonard and Jess Kaiser and Special Ed, it's, it's a great team, and I know they worked really hard to make sure that kids' needs are being met. So thank you for your leadership and, and all of your work. So, thank you.
We're here, happy to answer any questions that the, the board may have.
I have a couple of questions. I'm sure that comes as no surprise to anyone. Did you look at the scheduling process? I know that there, I know that there was a, you know, we had talked about the fact that there are a ton of administrative hours that goes into the actual concept of building the schedule and plugging students into that. Was that looked at? Do we feel as though that that's being done? Are there better programs out there that we're not using?
So we didn't have an opportunity to do that, because the scheduling process is just beginning now. So if we move forward with, with phase three, Tom and I have already talked and about me hanging out a little bit up there and during this, and looking at the scheduling process. As far as what's on paper and the step-by-step process of how it happens, that's very standard and very typical of, of how schools are doing it. So it's, it's, you know, a very typical process. Actually, I, I want to commend them. They actually are doing some things that where the students are entering their courses that are actually more efficient than others, some other schools are doing. As far as what's happening during the process, we just weren't in that timeframe.
Thank you. My second question is for the district, and I don't know if this is for Dr. Holler or Dr. Hoyt or Mr. Campbell, but just really your thoughts. You know, what are your thoughts on the recommendations? Did you see any surprises? And what are the next steps as a district that we're going to do based on these recommendations?
Well, I'll give a high-level thought, and then I'll ask Josh and, and Tom to, to add their pieces. Like Cindy, when she was talking through some of the findings, when they presented it to us, I, I was surprised. I thought for sure that there would be some more significant expectations of potential change for the schedule, especially around perhaps some of the staffing, because there has been questions that have come up over the years since I was a building principal about the high school schedule. So I was very happy with the, the outcome that this is an efficient schedule that meets student needs. But we also believe that there are changes that need to be made and things that we need to do as far as targeting that professional development to make sure that the instructional strategies that are being used by the teachers are really meeting the needs of the students. The high school has gone under some changes as far as multiple administrators in the building with APs. And we've had a lot of teacher turnover in various departments. And the teachers we have been, have brought on are fantastic, but there is a difference between teaching in a block and teaching in a strip. And many of the teachers that we have also brought on are, are brand-new teachers. So that already adds another level of professional development and support. So that, that's an area that we're, we would really like to pursue. And we had already identified the biology as an area concern, as well as, as our failure rate. And that, a lot of that work was led by Dawn and her team with the school counselors really digging into that and creating intervention plans to ensure that our at-risk students are having their needs met. And that work, along with what Alicia Leonard's doing with the, the high school team to create those supported study halls, has been a game changer for that high school, which was an area that kind of like put in and to explore, and they've expanded on each year. So I hope that answers the high-level piece of that. And then Tom and Josh, if you have anything more in depth.
I think one of the, the great outcomes of this was, did allow us to ask some really good questions, specifically with regard to science and, and the scheduling of biology. We, we've had a lot of conversations, myself, Mr. Campbell, Dr. Alcarro, about, you know, how can we best meet the needs with regards to biology and, and deliver the highest quality of education for biology? So we've had some of those discussions going. Dr. Alcarro's been doing some tremendous work with our science department in terms of taking a look at that earth-space course already, prior to the results of this coming out. But it's really allowed us, I think, to take this to a, a deeper level and just making sure that we're doing what's best overall for the kids in general for that building.
I'll echo a lot of what was said already. I just want to start with a thank you, though, too. I appreciate that the board supported this, and DEVOPAR's been great to partner with. One of the most important things that you do at the high school is build the schedule, because the complexity of it, to get students into the classes that they need over the course of four years, to move them toward the goals that they have for college and career, is, is complicated. And it's easy to mess up. So I, I think, I want to give a lot of thanks to Mr. Vecchio for the work that he's done over the last two years, as we've really refined that process of building the schedule in a methodical way. And it's been great to work with DEVOPAR in sort of answering some of those questions from the outside, because it's hard to see some things on the inside. And having their perspective from working in a lot of other districts and asking questions that we didn't even think to ask ourselves is really useful. And I wasn't really sure what to expect. Like, I know, having worked in several different schedules, and this is a unique one. So when I first arrived here, I was like, hmm, that's kind of interesting. But having worked in it and built it several times, you start to see that there are some efficiencies. So I wasn't completely shocked, but I, I, every schedule has costs for its benefits. And I think that's some of what was revealed here.
I appreciate it. My, my final comment would be, at, at the board's discretion, of course, I would love to see a 60, 120, and 180-day recap on the recommendations, or if there's any recommendations that the district has added, not as a check and balance, but more as to make sure that you guys feel supported, that, that we're making forward progress. Obviously, this came at a, at a cost to the district, and so we want to make sure that we're doing everything in our powers of word, at least for my sake, to, to support you all and to make sure that those recommendations are, are getting done and, and that they're working.
I, I appreciate that, and I think the team appreciates that, because DEVOPAR gave us a lot to think about, a lot of work, a lot to work through, and it's all for the betterment of the students. And that was the initial goal when we set out to do this, was do we have a schedule that best meets the needs of our students, that can provide them multiple opportunities to be successful? And I think overall, it does, but there are certainly areas for improvement.
I, I'd just like to talk about, one of the recommendations that was there was the population study. And obviously, we've been here as a board and administration, we've been talking a lot about population and enrollment, because there are projects up and coming in the township that are, you know, potentially going to add to the student population. And I guess, I, maybe, I would like to hear a little bit from administration in terms of what, how you feel about moving forward with a population study. And I also believe that the last time we've done a capacity study of our buildings was back in 2017 by KCBA, so that's a little dated as well. But getting a little ahead of myself here, but I guess the, with a population study, is that something we, we as a board and administration should be looking into?
I, I think it's always a good idea for the school district to have a, a system in which, in which you check yourself as far as the maintenance of your buildings, the capacity of your buildings, the programs that you're offering, and the number of staff that you have. And since I've been here in the district, the, the district has been changing as far as the fact that we're starting to see more and more transancy, and that came up at our last board meeting. And we're not really building, we don't really have large pieces of land where they're building single-family homes. And so some of the things that have been proposed in the community are, are course apartments, which we have talked about multiple times. And typically, people don't stay in apartments, so that adds to that level of, of transancy, which you would expect. So it becomes very, very time-consuming and, and difficult for a administration to make determinations based on what are appropriate staffing needs, when you don't have a long-range plan as to what your population of students are going to be. And it's always, in my opinion, a misstep just to say, oh, we have a retirement, let's immediately fill that position, just because that's what you've always done. You should really be looking at your numbers and looking at the numbers moving forward and the cohorts of those students to ensure that the, the staffing is appropriate, because that is about 70% of the district's cost. So enrollment projections, those studies do cost the district money, so that is something that is up to the board if they would pursue. But it's, it's something that districts do do, and it does help them anticipate staffing costs.
So, so currently, right now, we, we're aware of PDE projections, right? So I know it was mentioned at a township meeting, somebody, a representative from, from a development group had stated that enrollment is going to drop over the next five years. However, what was not mentioned was that in the 10-year projection period, enrollment is actually going to increase and go over 4,000 students. And I've always known as enrollment to be cyclical. You have ebbs and flows. And I, I guess my question would be, so we already have this PDE, PDE projection data, what, what would a population study give us that we're not already getting from, from the state with PDE?
Yeah, sure. Now, that's a fair question. And the analysis you just shared on what PDE is showing, I also reviewed that, verified it. So what you just said, based on what is published, is 100% accurate. The difference with, you know, an enrollment study with a company that that's what they do, so to speak, is the, they have, if they're good at what they do, they have demographers on, on their part of the team that do the study. So they're looking not just at trends, they're looking at your zero-to-five birth rates. They're looking at what's happening in the community. They're going to pull county data. They're going to look at your housing starts, the move-ins, the move-outs. They're going to look at the transancy issue. All those factors wrapped in are obviously going to be under assumptions, and there's going to be caveats to those assumptions. But what I've seen, and with the studies that we have done, because we have done two of them now, and I've done a number of them as an administrator during my administrative days, is that, that, that margin for error is usually within 2%. If you go back, and this is no disrespect meant to, you know, the PDE projections, but I think you'd see a much wider variance if you look at the historical range of what maybe they were sharing a couple of years ago, to maybe what those out-years look like today. So my, my, you know, based on my experience and some of the recent ones we've done, there's just a, a higher level of accuracy. Again, still assumptions building. There's just things that, you know, you know, who would have predicted a pandemic, right? And, and what that did in enrollment? And now everyone's still recovering and trying to essentially regroup on those projections, because obviously, many districts have seen that bubble where they've had that low enrollment year working through the system, but now they're starting to see recovery in some of their, you know, early, you know, kindergarten, first and second grade enrollments and projections. So again, I, I shared with Dr. Holler, that's certainly something that we could provide more information on, more detail about what you would get and kind of the differences as you just, you just alluded to.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong. The problem with the PDE study is they rely mostly on live birth rate, correct?
Correct.
And from I've been here in the last five years, I've seen that, you know, live birth rate says we're going down, but we haven't gone down, because we have a lot of people moving here...
Correct.
Because they want their kids to go to school. And I think the latest projection actually showed a slight increase from the PDE live birth rate. To me, that's because people aren't moving out and they, you know, decided to have their babies here, couldn't find homes or something, but yeah.
Correct, yeah. I, I think, again, there's, there's, to your point, there's many more factors than just the live birth rate that will roll into those projections. And I think, again, that's something, every community... And I think, again, that's something, every community's different. The migration in and out is different in every community. You know, I think if you look at Berks County in general, you would see trends of outflow from the city to certain school districts. And that will play an impact on enrollment. So again, you know, a more detailed study, you know, will take into effect those, you know, those nuances that may be specific to your community and your district. That's really the difference between kind of the formulaic PDE approach to how they do their projections. They're helpful, don't get me wrong. But in a case where you may be concerned about, you know, a direction going one way and you may be going the opposite, that, that would be concerning. Just, you know, some of what Dr. Holler shared with me, you know, it made me pause and think, yeah, maybe it would be time to take a closer look.
Do those studies include the age of households and what the turn rate is?
Median age, yes, yes, they do, yep.
And what the expected average turn rate is of those households?
Correct, yes. It'll look from zero to, you know, the, that, at that median age and also look at, you know, the, the death rate, so to speak. That all is factored in as far as.
And that's, that's based on census data, right?
Census data, yes, correct.
Just remind me, when was the last census?
2020.
2020. And the next one due is?
2020, usually every 10 years.
Every 10 years, okay, thank you.
But again, they're also pulling more specific county GIS data, too. So they would tap in the data that Berks County also has to give you a more localized, you know, data set, you know, below the census data.
Yeah, that is the, the potential concern that, that was brought up before was that we've, we've already hit max capacity in years past of 4,400 with the households that were existing then, back in 2007 or '08. And now we're talking about adding more, or what residential has been added in addition to the more that is to come. And that's where I think potentially a population study might be beneficial to, to really understand what that impact is going to look like. Mr. Fiddler, did you?
What is the cost? And if we don't know the cost, a range for one of these fancy schmancy studies?
I, I'm sorry. I could, I could give you, I could give you a range. Depending on the, the population and the size of the district, it could be anywhere from 10,000 to 20,000 would be my estimate for that study. Given your student count, number of buildings, I would say probably 15 to 20 would be my guess. The two that we've done for smaller districts, they, one was 1,200 students, one was 1,500 students. That would, that came in around 11,800, so, yeah.
Thank you. Mr., and, and my suggestion to the board, I guess, tonight was, unless we have a majority opposed, my suggestion was to allow administration to at least start looking into potential proposals that we could review and, and then ultimately vote on if we wanted to move forward with a, with a population study.
Mr. Mel, just one other comment, again, for the board's consideration and the administration's, your planning. I would not recommend a full-blown feasibility study. I think you, I think you should parcel this out. You look at enrollment, maybe you look at capacity, and then you look at other pieces. I, I think.
And you're saying, I'm sorry, you're saying feasibility study after the population study is done, separate from that, correct?
I think it, it should, yeah, the population study should be first. But even after that, I don't know that you'd need a full-blown feasibility study because you looked at, especially at the high school, you just had a comprehensive review of what's happening there.
Yeah.
So from a cost perspective, you know, I, I think looking at, at the pieces in kind of singular way and maybe getting quotes, you know, along the way is more cost-effective than essentially going and getting a full-blown feasibility study, quite honestly, with all the bells and whistles. I don't feel like you need that at this point.
Yeah.
You need some more information, but I think you can do it in a more cost-effective manner and in that fashion.
Yeah, and, and to that point, I mean, we, we made a lot of facility upgrades and, and construction projects were completed based on the last feasibility study. So I don't really know how beneficial that would be to, to have a full-blown one again, anyway.
Yeah, I, I think definitely knowing what the potentially, what potentially the population could look like in the next five to 10 years is, is going to be of critical importance. Because I know oftentimes, people are like, oh, well, you probably have space in your school because you have this many students in there. But we also have a lot of our own special education programs here, which we should, which we want. Because our special education students should be educated with their peers. We want them here with their neighborhood friends. But there are certain requirements that in order to provide those programs for our students, we need to have so much space for classrooms. And so while the number of students may be lower than the capacity of a building perhaps, it's because those, those rooms, those spaces are taken up with programs that we want here because they are, they are our children and we want them in our buildings with their friends.
Yeah, so would anyone oppose with the administration moving forward with at least looking at those options to present to the board?
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, yeah.
Because this, for some reason, this is going over my head with the numbers. Does it make sense doing this now when there's a possibility of apartments being built?
It's a good question. I, my, my understanding was the population study would take that into account?
Yes, that's, that's correct. So, you know, part of that, the process would be meeting with the administration, any local officials to look at what potential land, what potential development could take place in the next five to 10 years and note that potential growth along with how many K to 12 students can be built into the model. The one thing I would say about timing, you know, being it's February, you know, I would say, you know, having a study start in the spring, but maybe not complete to the fall and get the next October 1 count and then come to the board with it, may be a consideration. So it would just be something to think about from a timing perspective. You know, it's always good to try to recapture that October 1 count just to see truly how many students are in the buildings. And it's always a good comparison to the projections before then you do the final forecasting out the 10 years. So it would just be a consideration. You won't have to, not proposing you wait till the fall to start. I'm proposing that you set a timeline up that you can include that October 1 data and then present that to the board.
Yeah, it, it probably won't hurt. I, I do know, we, we are aware of the number of units that are being built at the, at one of the locations. However, the, it hasn't been unveiled, to my knowledge, of, at the old Promato location of how many residential units are going to be built there yet. So it might, that, that information might be available by then.
Thank you.
So just, just to reiterate, is there anyone opposed to having administration move forward with looking at options? You have a question, go ahead, Mrs. Blum.
In a population study, would they look at the difference between transfers and students who start out at kindergarten or first grade? Because a concern of mine would be that with the building of apartments, we would have students coming here and maybe beginning Exeter schools at 7th grade, 8th grade, 9th grade. And they would have different needs than our resident population.
Yeah, that, that's a great question. And that would be, so the trend data will take that into consideration somewhat. But what I think you're asking and proposing would be a really, you know, a historical look at some of those moves and then how they would impact the future. And, and that's something we would have to, to look at. The, the general studies we have done, and not just our company, but other companies, haven't gone to that level of detail. We have looked back, generally, it's a five-year look-back period, which includes also, you know, talking with administration on the ground, whoever's doing enrollment, you know, PIMS, et cetera, about what type of transitions they're seeing, especially when you're, you have an uptick in the transancy, as Dr. Holler had said, so.
If, if the board is okay with it, that was one of our agenda items and we created a chart. It's actually all of last year's data of our ins and outs for our students. Sheldon, if you wouldn't mind putting that up while the Deva, Deva Par consultants are here so we can just share what, what we're, we're talking about.
Can you define transient students and, and what the average length of stay is for transient?
Go ahead.
There's no average length of stay for transancy. It's the number of entries and withdrawals throughout the school year. So that includes kiddos who've moved in or moved out or both during that academic school year.
So that's a, I'm not, the reason I'm not understanding is because that's a total number. So you don't, so I guess what I'm saying is like 103, right? If you're at 51 and 52, you're even. But if you're at 80 started and 20, do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, so that, that's the thing that makes transancy difficult to track. Because when we were looking at the report today, we kind of honed in on one particular student. That student came from a neighboring district, was with us a couple of months, moved out of the district for a couple of months, came back to the district, then moved out for several months, and now is back in the district in another building. So they have not been a student with us. They, on paper, it looks like they've been here with us for a year plus, but they've only been here in spurts. Whereas then you could have, look at the next student and that student came from another district and perhaps stayed the entire year and now has moved to another district. So that's why, just transancy in general, is you would have to break it down into all the different categories of potentially that we're, we're seeing here. So that's why it's, it's, it's tracked like that. Because it would be, I think I understand what you're saying. It would just be, we would have to categorize that in such a way. We'd have to probably do it by hand.
But in your, I'm just making sure I understand it. So in your example, then, student example A, that student is counted four times in one of those numbers?
No, one time.
That's what I did.
That's what, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's, it's one time.
That was the next thing I was going to say. So this, what this actually represents is the number of unique, unique students who have had a disruption in their learning due to a move. And again, that could be, as in Dr. Haller's example, multiple moves or just one move or in, out. There's still one unique student.
And, and too, I want to point out, the reason that we brought this up and last time was because of our performance data. So not really related to population at all. But 14.3% of our students have not been in our classrooms, 100%, like at, at Jacksonwell, and I'm looking at right there. 14.3% of students at Jacksonwell haven't been in our classrooms 100% of the year. So then when we look at, you know, they're not performing well, well, they haven't been there. So that's, that's why we, that's why I asked last time to see this data. Because this is what's concerning when we're looking at their performance on, on tests.
And the, the total number of students that made up this transancy report was 390. And if you look at the chart, that's the entirety of the number of students at one of our elementary buildings is 390. I'm not saying they all came from Jacksonwell. I'm just making a comparison in the amount of students that, that is to give you perspective on the impact that that can have.
And, and certainly, people move out of communities and they move into different communities and their kids move. And Exeter, just like any other school district, is going to work very hard to ensure that those children that are coming to us have a welcoming experience. But their experience from another district, and it doesn't matter if it's Antietam or Wilson or Governor Mifflin or Redding or, you know, O. and J. Roberts, it doesn't, it doesn't matter. Their experience is different than the experience that we offer here in Exeter. It's not good or bad, it's just different. And their curriculum is different and the way they assess is different. So there is, there is a lot of time that is spent within our buildings to make sure that our students feel welcome, that it's a good transition for them, that if they have needs, that those needs are being met. And that, that does take a, a lot of time. And oftentimes, what we're seeing, which was brought up last week or two weeks ago when we were looking at our data specifically at our K1 and 2 students, there are still some districts that don't have a phonics program. They don't, they don't have a structured, a phonics program, which we do. We have foundations that we utilize. However, as we mentioned the other day, you almost have to teach kids how to learn foundations and it builds on itself. So as a result of that, because we've seen this uptick in transancy, we have started to look at something, another program. So that way, when we do have students who are coming in, we're not trying to teach them a program to teach them how to learn. And, and that's something that, again, periodically, districts have to review how they're, what they're, they're teaching and what they're using to teach in order to meet the needs of our, of our students.
Is it hard? Sorry, go ahead.
If, if a student moves here in the middle of 9th grade from another district and moves away the middle of 11th grade, is that counted as a transient student?
Well, this is one year. So it, they, for that year when they, they move, they, they would be, they would be in out. And then if we pulled that data and that student was there again, now they're, they would be in.
So when we, when we think of transancy, we're thinking of a one-year period?
I mean, yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the number of ins and outs over the year. You could pull this historically, sure, but we're not tracking individual students.
Okay, got it.
But it's also, it's, it's, it's middle, though, isn't it, right? So if they start here and complete that year, they do not count as transient, correct?
These were students that came in or they left during the course of this year.
Right, so if they were here on day one in 11th grade and left the district on the last day of 11th grade, they're not considered transient?
No, they were, they might have been on that report. If they, it, it depends on when we pulled the, pulled the data or how we pulled the data.
Okay.
But they are tran, but they're, again, they're transient students because they're not, they're here and now they're gone. But the students that we're seeing, we're seeing a lot more of that. So we might have, we might have a student that starts, Mr. Fiddler, in August and they're already gone by December. They're, they're on that report. We might have a student that starts in September 1st and they stay with us till June 5th. That student is now, is now out, that they're on that report.
So even if they miss, they come here the second day of school in August and stay to the end, they're still transient?
Because they're no longer with us. They haven't stayed with our, with our district.
So it's the leaving, not the coming?
No, it's the le, it's the coming and the, and the leaving. We're pulling, we're pulling both.
So my example, again, they arrive here on the second day of school in August and are here to the end of the year. Is that a transient student?
It is.
It is. Even though they've had pretty, they've had 99.9% of the education in that grade, they're still transient?
That's true. Because they might have had that much time in that grade, but they haven't had the full experience of our district. And we are a K through 12 system. And it's important that our students are here with us every day in order to get the biggest, to get the best experience from the educational programs that we have.
Are you aware of any studies? I mean, I can, I can look it up and will. I, I follow the Times's coverage pretty closely of, of education. But are you aware of any studies specifically focused on transient students?
Not off the top of my head, but I'm sure that they're, they exist because attendance, transancy, socioeconomic status, they all play into why students may not be successful and why there's, there's deficits in, in learning. When students bounce from district to district, again, that becomes a, a gap in their instruction and their experience. And as that happens more and more to students, that gap becomes larger and more difficult for educators to decrease. And it's, it's why we have the McKinney-Vento law in place for students who are homeless. So that way, when they're identified as homeless, they're not bouncing from district to district because they're already experiencing something that's traumatic in their life. So they want to at least be able to keep the children in a stable environment for that learning piece. But some children, that's, they don't have that and because of their family's work or just because of circumstances, they're, they're moving around a lot and that's disruptive to the education experience that they're having. And they're just, they're naturally just going to miss things, unfortunately.
Yeah, my, I would say probably 90% of my CASA kids were transient students.
Yeah, definitely, that makes sense.
In addition to being abused and neglected, they also had to deal with, deal with that.
And you, and you, you know, you feel for, you feel for kids. And then at the same token, we have it even happening within the district. So we have transancy happening within the district where we have families that, and, and that's a little bit more difficult because they might be a Lorraine family that has now bought a house in a Watten and they, they don't, they don't want to leave Lorraine or they don't want to leave a Watten or they don't want to leave Jacksonwell. But we've been holding the line and having people move to the other building because we're, we're trying to try. because we're, we're trying to track our population and make sure that we have the right number of students. Because when you have that happening, coupled with the fact that people are moving in and out, then you start to have classrooms that become unbalanced. Um, so it just, it becomes challenging for us to determine student needs and staffing needs.
What, what does it, what does a teacher do in, in any grade here at Exeter who sees a lot of flow within his or her classroom? Do we have specialists on board that they can consult with?
So we're, we're fortunate that we have three reading specialists in each of our elementary buildings that can help support with some of that transition when there's needs for our students in the area of reading. Our school counselors are very important when it comes to that. Uh, but other than, other than that core group, it really is up to the classroom teacher to identify the needs that the students are coming in with and then work with that student to, to, to fill those, fill those gaps.
And have they received special training or professional development along those lines?
Not, not specific to students.
To transancy?
Not, not specific to transancy, no.
Is that available somewhere that we could take advantage of?
I'm not aware of specific professional development that addresses, uh, transient students. Uh, we've been working with our teachers more so in looking at, uh, trauma-informed practices for students who have different experiences and how to meet those needs, uh, in the classroom uh, when they might have some type of upheaval in their lives, like being moved from a different home. Um, and then always looking at our student data, whether that be their, um, their absentee data, uh, their discipline data and their academic data to ensure that, uh, whatever area students might be having an issue with, that we can work with them and, and assist them and their family if need be. And that's why someone like, having a position like Alicia's is so important because she works with our staff teams to help identify some of those needs, needs and, and work with families to get support.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Dr. Haller, I, I'm concerned enough about this that I'd, I'd love to see this on a five-year, going back five years if we have, I don't know if we have that information, but if we were able to, to, uh, plot this out on a line graph, I think it'd be helpful for us to understand if we've plateaued or if we continue to peak. I also think that it would be good data for, uh, us to share with the township as they look at the new projects that we've been looking at.
We, we can pull that data. Um, there will be some skewing in that data though because of the pandemic. So I would say for sure the nineteen twenty, the twenty twenty-one and even the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Um, I'm thinking back to some of the data that I collect in my office around McKinney-Vento, status homelessness, um, enrollments, registrations. Um, transancy also includes students moving in and out of homeschool. Um, so some of those numbers during those three school years that I cited were astronomical in all districts. So the, the data for those years would be skewed. Um, I think if you looked at the data a little before that and then the data from last year and this year, that might give you probably a better perspective.
I mean, even if we did seven years and we just asterisked the, the, the years that you think were skewed, I just think it's good for us to know if, if we're plateauing, if we're going up. And I think that's important for, as the township looks at new projects, housing projects, I think it's important for them to see whether our transancy continues to go up based on the projects that they're looking at.
I agree. I just wanted to qualify that.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Sound like Dr. Hoyt when he talks about the, the Keystone and the algebra data and how data didn't count and all that stuff.
Yeah, and, and again, you know.
Don't count this data either.
You know, I don't want people to think transancy means like there's, they're not good kids. Like that's, that's not what we're saying or all, every single child that comes to us has needs, not saying that. Um, but we're, we are saying that we, we are concerned, um, with the, the number of kids, the, the numbers that we're seeing in and out, uh, because of the needs that we're seeing. And obviously we're gonna help every, every single child that comes to us and do the very best, uh, that we can to support them. But we are also concerned, again, about the addition of, uh, apartments because apartments are, that's, that becomes transient housing when you have kids because essentially people are gonna want to move into a house. And they, they, Exeter is a desirable community and our houses are not cheap. Um, so, you know, this might be the place where they want to be because we have a good school system. We have a great school system. We offer a lot of opportunities and we hear that time and time again from our parents, uh, especially our parents who are desperately trying to find a house and then they're upset because they had to move to another district. And I'm sure they're gonna love it there too. And it's the biggest compliment that we can get. But apartments, most people just don't stay there with families because they just, they want, they want a larger space to, to raise their children.
Okay, any other questions for, for Devopar? Nope, okay. Thank you very much, appreciate the presentation.
Thanks, thanks for having us, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Um, and then, uh, just again, I just want to make sure, is the board okay with the administration moving forward, looking at options for a population study?
I would just ask that it's not just that, that when we get the cost analysis, we also get a, a, a description of what's offered. Um, it's, it's easy to look at what costs the least or what costs the most, but if we're getting added service or if it comes highly recommended, I think that those things are important in making a good decision.
Yeah. All right, um, we're gonna go ahead and move forward. Uh, we are not amending the agenda tonight. And as far as public comments on agenda items, no one has signed up. So we're gonna move on to committees with, uh, starting with education with Mrs. Wilson.
Okay, so I'm assuming we just had the district transient, uh, transancy update. All right, um, so we do have some conference requests that will be on the a, agenda. Um, anyone have questions about those three conferences? And then we will be, um, taking a look at some field trips within a thirty, uh, within a sixty-mile radius and then we will be voting on field trips beyond the sixty-mile radius. Um, we do have the purchase of some textbooks that Dr. Hoyt has over here that if anybody would like to take a look at, they're here to, um, look at. He'll talk about it in a minute, but I just want to point out that all of these textbooks have already been, um, budgeted for the school year. So they are budgeted for. Would you like to say anything else about the textbooks?
Um, so up to start first is, um, we spent some time, um, due to our current resource, CPM for math, um, the fact that it's looking to possibly depreciate as well as just trying to put in, uh, the best experience for students for math. So our, our math department at the junior high, in collaboration with our high school math department because Algebra One is taught, uh, in both different buildings there, have spent some time looking at different resources, um, upon their recommendation. Um, and myself as, as a math person, as well as, uh, Dr. Alcarro has been working with them. Uh, we've all agreed that, uh, this would be the best resource to move forward. Um, this, uh, series, um, aligns with what currently also is being used in our higher level math, Algebra Two, geometry, pre-calculus and calculus. So, um, this would be going to what this, it used to be called Big Ideas, now it's called Math in U. So this would be, um, a five-year license starting next, uh, for the next school year uh, in August for, um, our Algebra One, grade seven and grade eight. Uh, it would be a five-year license. If, I am still working on the shipping cost, um, but just to give perspective here on shipping is, um, we pay for the shipping upfront, um, for the full five years. And the one thing that is unique about Math in U as opposed to other resources that we use in the district is that in addition to, um, getting the hardcover, which I'll pass these around, um, students are also provided every single year with a consumable book. So you may, if you're a parent, you may see that come home sometimes, but it's a, it's a thicker workbook where students do their, uh, handwritten work in there. Um, so that, we're paying basically for that over the course of the next five years upfront. So if you do break that down, you're looking at, it's about, it's about a dollar ninety-two cents per, um, consumable per year that, that shipped with something like that. But like I said, I am working with the rep to get that reduced a little bit, but, um, that's, that's not too bad because you consider shipping does go up year to year uh, and that's something that we're paying ahead of time. So I will pass these around. Again, this is for grade seven math, grade eight math, um, for the different, uh, levels that we do in our junior high as well as our Algebra One resource.
Dr. Hoyt, when you look at shipping, I gotta get my shot in, so, uh, can you look at weight? Because when you compare your math, and I know I'm jumping ahead here, but when you compare math at a ten percent shipping rate of total cost versus your biology books at a two-point-five percent rate of total cost, I'd like to see what weight looks like. I mean, maybe they're just really, really big math books that weigh a lot more, but it, it would be helpful because it, it just-
Could we start putting the, the book weight on the agenda?
Well, I, oh, sorry. I will say you're looking at four, seven fifty, five fifty, seven fifty, eight hundred twenty-five consumables every year being shipped for the next five years.
Right.
Whereas with biology, you're sending just, um, they, we already have the books. Um, the reason why you're seeing a low shipping cost there is that we had an increase in enrollment, so we needed to get some extra hardcover books, but everything else is just a digital license because we already have the books in place. Where, where, it's a little bit heavier here because we ha, we don't have any of these hardcover books right now. So it's, it's a little bit higher on the year one front end, but then it's the consumables the rest of the year.
And I totally understand that, I'm not picking here.
I am still working on it though, I can assure you.
No, yeah, yeah, I just, I think when the community sees this, that's why I asked about weight, right? Because if you just do raw math, you look at two-point-five versus ten percent, it doesn't look right. It looks like we're getting a better deal for biology, but when you put it the way you did, clearly we're, we're shipping more pounds, right? Which is gonna cost, cost more to ship, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
Question?
Go ahead. Go ahead, Ms. Blue.
Does this mean then that we won't pay shipping for the consumables for the next five years?
No, we, we pay for that upfront for the next five. So this, this is the cost of, yeah, so we, correct.
Okay, um, whenever I hear about seventh grade math, I think about those hapless students from, I guess it's four years ago now, uh, most of whom couldn't do math at grade level on standardized tests. Very sad moment in this district's history. What, what were we using then and what have we, been we using up till now? And do you foresee this purchase as helping our students do better at this level of math? Algebra One is kind of a, kind of the fulcrum, isn't it? Between, say, arithmetic and higher math in the later years. And it just seems that we weren't serving our students very well four years ago when they did so poorly. How, how will this purchase help our students do better?
Well, again, one of the reasons why here is that the CPM, the current resource that the district has been using for a number of years now, um, I want to say going back to probably almost ten year, over ten years that they've been using this. Um, CPM is a very problem-solving based, uh, very, um, reading-heavy, text-heavy resource. So along the way, the district has been supplementing that to support that. A, a resource isn't going to fix results. Um, I believe good instruction does, but I also believe that having a good coherent aligned resource in conjunction with high-quality instruction is where you see results. I think with our data, what you're seeing is that we're significantly growing kids in our Algebra One. Um, but we have a lot of work to do in, in our seventh and eighth grade math. Um, I will advocate for those teachers in the junior high. They are teaching two different curricula to prepare for two different assessments in that case. So if you're a junior high math, Algebra One teacher, you're preparing the kids to take both their grade-level PSSA as well as the Algebra One Keystone exam. One assessment is in April, one assessment is in May. Those standards are somewhat related, in other cases, unrelated whatsoever. So, um, there are units of study that don't exist anywhere in Algebra One that still have to be instructed in that course. So, um, for us, we've been spending a lot of time as a department. Uh, Dr. Alcarro's been helping to lead that department as well and just trying to focus on high, high-quality instruction using our benchmarking data, which isn't something that was necessarily done, uh, previously. Uh, benchmarking data to get a gauge of what do our kids know, what do they not know and how can we best instruct them, instruct them and as well as giving feedback to the teacher. So, long story short, this is a much better aligned resource. Um, but our, our focal point is really working and supporting the good teachers that we have to just help improve instruction.
And if I could just add to that, that just doesn't happen in seventh and eighth grade. It, it really goes back to what's happening K through six. And, uh, as, as Dr. Hoyt mentioned, we've had CPM in the district for ten years and it's been ten years that we had math investigations. And, uh, math investigations while a, um, a, a good math resource is not necessarily aligned, um, to PSSAs. And the district knew that when they purchased that product ten years ago. And, um, you may recall that at that time, uh, several years later, there was a resolution passed by the school board, um, at the request of the, um, central office that the district would no longer basically put a whole lot of concern and investment in standardized tests. That the, the, the philosophy of the district of that time was that they were going to teach, um, the best way for that they thought that kids should learn how to do math. And that was when Common Core, PA Common Core came into play, or Common Core and then, uh, PA then turned it into PA Core, um, which added even more, excuse me, even more to it. Um, so that is, that has been a, a struggle for our teachers that over the years that they have been asked and directed to teach a program with fidelity that they have known does not align to what kids are essentially being asked and tested to do. So, you know, on one hand, you have people saying, we are not gonna teach to a test. We're not, we're not gonna teach to a test, we're gonna teach kids and that's that and we're not gonna worry about test scores. And on the other hand, then we have people saying, oh my gosh, look at all these test scores. Kids can't read, kids can't do math. Well, we actually kind of know that that's not really true because we have ni, a ninety-seven percent graduation rate. And the majority of our kids do go to college and, or they enter the workforce or, um, they're taking, uh, the test to go into the military. Can't, can't do any of those things if you, if you can't read and you can't do math. So overall, I, do I want to see test scores go up? You bet, you bet you I do, because, you know, you know I'm very competitive and I want to make sure that our kids are doing the very best and our teachers work really, really hard. But on the other hand, Pennsylvania standardized test is different than New Jersey's test. It's different than Virginia's test. And then we have these national tests, like the NAEP test.
Yeah.
Um, so, you know, you have all this data and you can tell a story about any, any piece of data that you have. But I think the most important data that we have in this district is what is the culmination of a K-12 program here in Exeter, which is the number of kids who are pushing themselves to take AP courses, the number of students that push themselves to take dual, take those dual enrollment opportunities, the number of students that are getting into the BCTC programs and taking, um, those opportunities and turning them into careers and just the, the, the work of the gra, the graduation rate. Because that, that doesn't happen by accident. That's, that's a, that's a hard work and that wouldn't happen if we didn't have a lot of people here who cared and we didn't have supportive parents. So are standardized tests important? Are getting resources that are aligned critically important? They absolutely are, but, um, there's, there's another piece to that data that I think I would be remiss if I didn't highlight all the hard work of our kids and just, just kind of pushed to the side and said, this is just a test and it's a number and that's who our kids are because it, it's not.
You, you mentioned a board resolution, do you remember what year that was?
I, I don't remember what year it was, but I'm sure I could find it. It was when, um, Dr. Davies was the assistant superintendent. I'm sure it's in, in board docs. Um, and again, some, there are some, there are some districts that don't really talk about standardized tests because it's a requirement, but again, it's not the pro, whole profile of their district or of their learners, but it is a, it is a requirement. So, you know, and people don't want us to teach to a test. So, you know, we, we have to balance, um, reading, writing, math and then taking, taking a standardized test is a skill. So, you know, if you've ever taken SATs or any type of test to get any type of license or certification, you practice that. You have to learn the content and then you have to practice that test because that language and the, and the way that those questions appear- are different than the way that we instruct students day-to-day. And, and I know as a college professor, you know exactly, you know, what I'm, what I'm referring to.
If you come across that date, I'd be, that year, I'd be interested.
Yeah, well, I'm sure we can dig it, I'm sure we can dig it out and send it to you.
And we take a lot of pride in our AP and our dual enrollment. You know, and as a former AP teacher myself, for calculus, you are teaching to a test. I mean, you are. So there, there is a lot of. Standardized tests aren't necessarily all bad, but there's, there's a lot of good that could come out from the hard work and preparation and knowledge of content standards, skills, big ideas, and all those things. So, you know, I just go back to, the research will tell you, the most effective piece in the classroom for a student is the classroom teacher. It's not a textbook. It's not a curriculum. It's not a gymnasium. It's not a beautiful school. It's the classroom teacher. And our teachers in this district want to get better, and we're gonna work to support them with that, with this new resource.
Great. Thank you.
All right. There's no more questions about book purchases. Okay, yeah, so there, so, yes, so there's math.
Oh, we're not done. We're not done with book purchases.
Yeah, there's biology. And then there is a physical text, a science textbook, that's an extension purchase. So it's already an approved textbook. It's just an extension. In addition to an extension for the junior high social studies textbook. So those are extensions. So we've already approved the textbook. We already have them in place. We're already using them. They're just extensions. Questions on those?
Just to give a little context on these, one that I'll highlight specifically is the social studies one. We're doing a one-year extension on that with the notion that they will then start to investigate a new resource moving forward as well. So what, what my team has been trying to do in the last year and a half was really trying to help to balance and get a gauge on where our licenses are at, so that it doesn't put a burden on future years for budget. So we're really trying to stagger some of those things. So that's, that's why you see, if you're asking, "Why is it just a one-year license?", that's why we're doing that. So you will see over the course of, of the next month, too, we will bring some other resources forward. We're still working on some of those, but these are current ones. These are just purely extensions.
And then our last piece is a tuition agreement between Conrad Weiser School District and the Exeter Township School District for special education services for one student.
Allison, is this kind of like the ones that we approve for professional schools and things? It just happens to involve another district? Because it's the first one I can recall.
Yes, I think this was a renewal.
This is an out-of-district placement for a student with special education needs.
Right, but I mean, most of the time, we see it's going to some sort of specialized school.
Conrad Weiser is the only school in the county that actually has their own alternative program within their school. It's called Weiser Decisions, and it's for students who have behavioral and emotional support needs. It's a wonderful placement, and it's hard to get a spot in there. So when I'm able to get a student in there and I have that need, I like to use them quite a bit.
I just didn't remember ever seeing Conrad Weiser.
Yeah, we have had, since I've been here, we have had students at Weiser Decisions, but not often, again, because it's hard to get a slot there, because it's a highly sought-after program.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so not a renewal, something new?
New student.
New student. Okay, that's everything for education.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. And just to verify, we're gonna move to the voting meeting, 5B, D, E, F, G, H, and I. All right, thank you. And Mr. Morgan, Finance and Order Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mel. The first thing up is the 2025-26 Berks County Intermediate Unit mandated services budget.
Would like to discuss that.
I could say their, their board approved the budget that's sent out to the districts. We have about three percent increase. This is not specific programs. This is basically, I guess, their operational budget. I think, Mr. Fidler, are you the BCIU rep?
I am.
Was there anything extraordinary in the budget? I didn't see much change. Is this a slight increase?
I, I did not see anything extraordinary.
Okay.
And you can quote me on that.
I would refer the board to page fourteen of the contract if you want to see the vast overview of, of the increases. Any other questions? All right. And I would just remind the people listening at home that this increase of, or the budget of two-point, give or take about two-point-two million dollars, this is not our budget. This is spread out amongst everybody within the county. All right, moving on. B, Ready to Learn Tax Equity Resolution.
If you remember in last year's budget proposal, the governor actually broke out the increases, putting them into a ready-to-learn block grant. He gave us an adequacy increase. And also, I think there's only three or four districts in the county that got a tax equity increase. With that, there's mandate, or allowable costs you can use those for. One of them being is loss of tax revenue due to appeals in court ordered. We are basically gonna use that the first year. We got roughly three-hundred-eight thousand. I've been able to go back the last four years. I don't have records for the fifth year, but we had three-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand in lost revenue that was court, court ordered. The other things you can use that for is to decrease your debt. There's questions of what that means, you know. Last thing I got from PDE, and we'll be looking at that next year, it has to actually be a principal conterment, not paying your debt. But we'll worry about that next year. By the way, in today's budget, the governor's also given us another three-hundred-eight thousand for next year, if that passes. So that's gonna be continuation on top of this three-hundred-and-eight. So we'll, we'll have to have another resolution. This listener drafted this resolution to be general, so we probably use it each, each year instead of being specific. Another one is to decrease, or to offset tax increases, which is very. The wording, I'm not sure what that means. Because any, any increase or any additional expense could be a tax increase. So we're not even looking at that this year. But what we're looking at is to offset lost revenue from tax appeals that were approved by the courts.
And you're required to submit this resolution and vote on the resolution and pass it before you can get your money.
Correct.
Don't go far with that mic, Mr. Feig. Any other questions? All right, moving on. Approval of E-Rate mini-bids. Mr. Feig?
Okay, the FCC and part of, I guess it's, if you ever look at your phone bill, there's taxes on there that are set for municipalities or for the FCC to, to give back to school districts. Basically, to offset your cost of internet or supplying internet to your students. Also, equipment. Years ago, it was more for phone service. Now it's all for equipment. You have to go out for bid, competitive bid, which they did, which we call the mini-bids. And they have to be awarded before the end of the year and the purchase for those, those funds. These are monies from the government. We're just following the procedures and what we can use them for.
Any questions?
Yeah, where, do we know where the wireless access, access points are being used in the UPSs? Are they for the entire, all facilities upgrades, or?
We have a lot of, I don't know if you want to call them all wireless, but we also do hotspots with them, which can be sent with students that do not have connectivity.
Mr. Martin, could you enlighten us?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes, the wireless hotspots are gonna be throughout the district, throughout the building. Nearly every classroom has them. The ones that we're upgrading this year are replacing a model that will be end-of-life soon. So we need to get those replaced. The UPSs go in all of our network closets, so they keep our network infrastructure up and running in the event of power issues. So we're trying to get all of those upgraded. They were an E-Rate mini-bid roughly five years ago. The batteries in those UPSs have started to die. So we want to get those replaced, so that when we have these power outages, the, the network in the buildings don't go down.
Thank you. That was gonna be my one question, is, is it possible through the E-Rate or the PEPM to, to get batteries, just the batteries to replace on those UPSs, or do you have to buy the entire UPS?
I believe you have to buy the entire UPS.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Mel, that's it for me. We'll be moving A, B, and C to the voting meeting.
Thank you much, Mr. Morgan. And we're gonna move over to Facilities and Transportation Committee with Dr. Battler.
Thank you, Mr. Mel. It is recommended that the board school directors approve the updated transportation agreement between Cottage Seven Academy and the Exeter Township School District for transportation for two students from Cottage Seven Academy to their residence during the 24-25 school year at a per diem rate of one-hundred-and-fifty per day for a total of twelve-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Excuse me. If ESY eligible, it'll go up to fifteen-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars, depending on the days. And the agreement is attached.
This is just an update to your pre-existing agreement with them. Cottage Seven does their own transportation, which is wonderful, because they primarily provide services to students who have significant behavioral needs. And we had, speaking of transiency, we just had a student move in who's already placed at Cottage Seven and will remain there, so we're adding him to the transportation agreement.
Okay.
Okay.
Good to go.
That will be moving to the voting meeting.
All right, thank you very much. Let's see, Personnel Committee with Dr. Herring.
Thank you. We'll be voting to approve resignations of certificated staff, support staff, retirements of certificated staff, appointments of guest teachers, and additional assignments of certificated staff, as well as leaves of absence. We'll also be approving a job description. The board of directors will approve the attached job, job description for the school security personnel. I believe it's just a change in the title name, as well as classification. I was wondering if you could clarify that part.
Sure, sure. Over the summer, there was mandates to the education school code, so we are bringing the, the title of school, school security personnel in line with that mandated change. In addition, we are also changing the language of the level to match what's in the current CBA that had not been changed years ago. So bringing everything in line. And just to be, to be clear, none of the essential job functions are changing or job duties, just the, the title.
Diane, how many of these folks are in the district?
We have two that are in this position, and then we also have Mr. Eric Seidel, who, who is in the school security personnel as well.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm sorry, I guess I would say in the, in the job description, but the, it says reports to, these would still report to the principal? In this case, they're not reporting to, to Eric?
At this point, it's just the principal.
At this point, no, okay. Thank you.
And if there are no other questions, we'll be moving items eight A through F. And that's everything.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Herring. Sorry, Policy Committee with Mrs. Bloom.
We have the following policies for second reading. Policy zero-one-one, policy three-one-seven-point-one, policy eight-zero-three, policy eight-zero-five, policy eight-zero-five-point-one, policy eight-zero-five-point-two, policy eight-zero-six, and policy eight-zero-seven. Any discussion? Any questions?
No? Okay. So we'll move that on to the voting meeting as well. Thank you, Mrs. Bloom. Let's see, we're gonna move on then to public comments on non-agenda items. And that has not, no one has signed up for that either. And just to confirm what we're moving over to the February voting agenda, we have meeting minutes. Items 5B, D, E, F, G, H, I, 6A, B, and C, 7A, 8A through F, and 9A. Are there any board members that would like to be heard at this time? Okay, I do have one thing. I would just like to recognize, there was a recent passing of a former board member, Pat O'Brien-Pesja. Pat served on the school board for eight years. And while I didn't serve with her at the time, some of you on this board did. I got to know her a little bit from attending meetings in the past. She was a very nice lady. So I just want to give my condolences to her family for their loss. Okay, if nothing else, our next meeting will be our voting meeting on Tuesday, February eighteenth at 7:00 PM. There will be an executive session immediately following the adjournment of this meeting to discuss safety and security. If there are no objections, we'll adjourn the meeting. Hearing none, meeting is adjourned.